Board of Commissioners to order, at this time, I would like to recognize Commissioner Clancy Ballcom for the invitation.
Invitation.
Bow your head, please. Dear Lord, we just thank you so much for this place we call home. The way I ask that you give us wisdom to be good stewards and that you would guide us in our decision making. But we know we're blessed. We know that every good and perfect gift comes from you and that we are truly blessed. So help us to be stewards of what you've given us. But we thank you for all your many blessings. We thank you for each other and just ask you to guide us through this evening in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. If everyone will please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is informal comments from the community. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak in informal comments?
We have one who signed up ahead of the meeting on the register to speak soon.
Got it. Okay. Thank you very much. We will recognize the speakers who signed up for informal comments. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by first giving their name, stating where they are residents in Union County, and indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of your remarks. A speaker may not yield their time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether at the same or separate meetings, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. Okay, I will first recognize Heather Claus.
How are you guys? Good evening. Can I get these to the members? Thank you. And then there's some extra brochures. Good evening. Thank you, guys. I'm Heather Claus. I am a resident of Union County. I've been a resident for, oh, gosh, years. Born and raised in Charlotte, so not many natives of us. I wanted to just come and present our nonprofit foundation to the community and just talk a little bit about what we do. Kimberly's Place Foundation is a local nonprofit for mental health and suicide prevention. We started our foundation in memory and our driving purpose for a dear Union County public school teacher who committed suicide back in December 8th of 2020. She was knocking down barriers herself and really trying to bridge some gaps when it comes to students, families, and that and the community for mental health, Down Syndrome, and many other nonprofits that we partner with. We are currently doing amazing things and partnering with our community with different government agencies, different nonprofits, and just making a huge impact in our community. Our services include, we case manage with different families and then reach out to all of our different resources and nonprofits, whether that's therapeutic services. We help ages from as little as little ones that can speak enough and then all the way up to veterans. So we partner with the VFW as well. The other thing that we're trying to do within the community is there's not really a major crisis kind of connection when it comes to suicide or any mental health crisis after hours. You can call a 988 number and it's wonderful, we partner with them as well to get our information connected together. But we are really hands-on in the community, especially local. So our phone number, you can contact anytime. We will reach out to the families. We partner wonderful agencies in the community that we can literally just call and make sure that those people have direct services at any time. And the great part about this is right now, currently, we are self-funded by our local partners and hope sponsors and ourselves. Thank you to a lot of my family members and other people who we partner with. But we take those funds and 100% goes directly back into the community for these families that call us or contact us. So I know my other partner is getting ready to come up in a little bit. I don't want to take her speech away from her. She's just going to continue with that. But we just wanted to say, you know, we're here. We are continuing to try to drive grant funding, whether local, state, and federal. And our goal is to continue to really break that stigma for the mental health support in our county and state.
Would you like to share the phone number?
Yes. It's 704-200-6193 is the direct number. And anybody, whether you're in the county using resources or outside resources, we'll be glad to help anybody.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Laura Givens.
Good evening. I'm Laura Givens. I am the Vice President of Kimberly's Place Foundation. I am a resident to Union County since 2013. We live in Monroe, but in, I guess, the municipality of Westwood Chapel. So like I said, we really drive to create and fill those gaps for mental health and suicide prevention. Just to kind of tackle back onto what she was saying, we've created a bunch of partnerships already in the community since we've established the foundation, including partners, Turning Point, VFW of Indian Trail, Atrium Levine's Children's Hospital, where we provide a mental health self-care day for patients and families that are there on the rehab floor monthly. We also are connected with Union County Social Services and their Mental Health Solutions Group to help fill in the gaps where we can in our community and just kind of really help, you know, bind it all together where our community is lacking. We help provide suicide prevention services, free hope support groups. We offer the community resources and emergency services. We also offer financial assistance to the families and individuals that are seeking therapy and mental health services. The foundation also offers and provides educational support for students, including educational tutoring, transitional assistance going from day treatments back into schools, IEP and 504 assistance. The goal for the foundation is to grow our hope program to incorporate mental health services, educational and therapeutic support, all in one location, and financial support at no cost for the community sustain-- excuse me, at one place with financial support or no cost to the community's sustainability. So it's been amazing. Just like her, we, you know, we lost our friend. I also have a child that struggles. So it was something that was really drawn for me to become a part of. And many students, many kids in the county, just, we need help. And to be able to help provide that and be able to do this self-funded at this point, like she said before, we are continually trying to go after more funding to really help provide what we're lacking.
Would you like to share the phone number one more time for those that need help?
Yes, ma'am. It's 704-200-6193.
Thank you so much. Are there any other speakers who have not signed up who wish to speak tonight? Hearing none, we will move to the next item on the agenda. That brings us to three items that are public hearings. Before opening the first public hearing, I will read the rules that will apply for any members of the public wishing to speak on any of these public hearings. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by first giving their name, stating whether they are residents of Union County, and indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of your remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers shall limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk of the board. The first public hearing is item 25-069 regarding conditional rezoning case CZ-2024-006 New Salem. I will open the public hearing and recognize Lee Jensen, our Director of Planning and Zoning, for comments from the staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Board. Manager Matthews. As you stated, this is a rezoning request. It's 2024 CZ-006, working title of New Salem. It's a rezoning request. It's been submitted by Terry and Deborah Stevens. Probably should wait for the screen to drop. I guess we could see it over there. They're revising the Union-- asking to revise the Union County zoning map by rezoning two parcels of property totaling about two and a half acres from RA 40 to light industrial with conditions. And they'll also put those two parcels together into one piece. Several conditions that are associated with that. They'll have, they've asked for five-year vesting rights, that the development will meet all the requirements of the Union County Development Ordinance, that the approval will be limited to site plan dated December 9th, 2004, that they'll install a six-foot opaque, six-foot opaque fence along the northern border of the property. The next slide, you'll see a site plan. I'll kind of point out where that is. And then the property will meet the post-construction requirements of the 210 and 50-year storm events. Again, this is the site plan. This is in the northeastern kind of corner of the county. You can see my, if you can see my cursor here, this is New Salem Road, and you got Sugar and Wine, Carl Polk, and Tarleton Mill. If you're familiar with Polk Mountain Grocery, it's kind of catty-cornered to this site. Gives you a good point of reference. So again, they're asking to, the specific request is light industrial with conditions, and the proposed use is a Type II mini-storage warehouse units. So that's the typical kind. It's not climate-controlled. Those are the metal, long metal buildings with roll-up doors. That's kind of what you see. This is the northern border of the property. During one of the community meetings, the owner of the properties back here, that was a minor subdivision that was done maybe a year or two ago, they requested, because they're going to be building some homes back there, that there be an opaque fence. And I believe the applicant has agreed with that request. And the entrance on the site, because this is a, you've got a number of roads that kind of come together right here into this intersection. NCDOT wanted that driveway pushed back as far away from that intersection as they could. So you see the entrance coming off on New Salem Road right here. Existing conditions, this is the first top left is looking into the site. So you can see it's a, I think there were some trees on it. Those trees were taken down, but you can see it's a cleared site. There is an existing driveway going into the property. And then looking at the rest of the pictures, top right, looking south along New Salem Road, you can see it's a fairly rural, very rural area up there, a lot of farmland. And then the other two are kind of across the street and looking to the north. Again, you can see the Polk Mountain Grocery there in both of those pictures.
What's Krista's Corner?
Krista's Corner? I could not remember the name of the other one. I appreciate that. As far as development status go, you can see there's a lot of undeveloped property out here. Again, a lot of vacant agricultural property, but a fair number of large-lot residential homes and, again, that commercial node right at the intersection. On the site itself, there are no major environmental features. I will note that across the street, there are some identified wetlands. However, there's also some identified wetlands at the site of Polk Mountain Store. I don't believe those are actually there. Some of these maps are based on old data, so you can, again, those are underneath buildings. So I don't think those actually exist. But you can see some streams in the area, but again, on the site, which is here, so there's two parcels highlighted in black, no major environmental features. The vast majority of the zoning in the area is RA 40, so that's your residential agricultural, one-acre minimum lot size zoning district. However, right at the intersection, Krista's Corner and Polk Mountain Store are zoned B4, and they have been for quite a number of years. In terms of existing transportation, no improvements to any of the roads identified in that area. Latest traffic counts were from 2021 and 2022. Those were by NCDOT. You can see about 2,700 daily trips along New Salem Road and about 300 on Carl Polk. The Union County 2050 Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map identifies future land use as rural residential, which is a low-density residential zoning district. Because this is a commercial rezoning request, we do not consult Union County Public Schools. Public water is available to the site. However, the site is not requesting to connect to water, and it will not require septic Community meeting was held in January. Three residents attended the meeting. They asked about the septic fields, because this was, this site was part of that minor subdivision that was approved. Those lots were sold off subsequently, applied for rezoning, which is why we're here tonight. Couple of people asked about the previously permitted septic systems, because I believe there were some easements that came onto this property for those septic systems. The two owners have worked together and have figured that out, and they've moved those septic systems off of this property onto an adjacent one. Couple of people asked about lighting and glare on adjacent properties. No changes really made based on those. I believe there's a note on the plan that the only lighting will be wall packs, which will actually go on the building itself. And no other comments were received by staff. And the closest towns are really Union and Fairview, and they're a good number of miles away, so no other towns were solicited. Before I get into the report or the recommendation, kind of go over some of the negatives and positives. Some of the negatives, the land use map does identify this area as rural residential. The light industrial designation is not consistent with that residential identification. And the proposed rezoning could facilitate ongoing and future industrial uses in close proximity to existing residential uses that may not be consistent with the plan. However, there are a number of positives associated with this rezoning. There are two existing businesses, previously noted, across the street. Those properties are both zoned for non-residential use and have been for a number of years. The light industrial zoning with the condition, with the conditions and the type of use that's proposed will be very consistent with what's already there across the street. And then the proposed use would not create a significant amount of traffic. We've seen that storage units don't create a lot of traffic. It's just usually people going and dropping stuff off and every once in a while picking things up. And then if approved, it can meet the Union County Development Ordinance, and with those other conditions, will meet stormwater requirements and the other things that were mentioned. So based on that, staff's recommended approval. We're also recommending that the Comprehensive Plan be amended for a commercial node at that intersection. I will point out, too, that that is one thing that the, I'm going off track here a little bit, but the land use plan, the Rural Land Use Plan Steering Committee is looking at our areas out in the rural parts of the county that may have some small businesses at intersections and the need to maybe update the plan to have rural commercial nodes. So this would be in line with kind of some of the things that they're talking about. So staff has recommended approval, and the planning board at their meeting also recommended approval, and that was unanimous. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I believe I saw the applicant here earlier, so they may want to come up. Yep, there you are. They may want to come up and make a presentation, but if you have any questions, me, I'll be happy to answer.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yes. Lee, just one question. If you could go back to the requests and conditions slide, might have been your second. There we go. So item number three here, the approval is limited to the site plan dated December 9th, 2024.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification purposes, so the conditions of this rezoning would be that the site plan, as we saw tonight, would be, yep, so we're talking about mini-storage facilities and that's all?
Yes.
So...
If they wanted to do something different, they could come back and ask the board to change that approval with an updated site plan.
Okay. So the storage of, you know, equipment or machinery, things like that, would be out of the scope of this site plan?
Correct. Now, I will say, if they wanted to store equipment or whatever inside one of those units, then they could.
Sure.
But it couldn't be open outdoor storage.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Any other questions?
Okay. I do want to recognize the applicant, if they'd like to share any comments or say a few words.
Thank you, Board. My name's Terry Stevens. We live probably five minutes from there, and we do own Krista's Corner, which is right direct across the street there. So we just, you know, we was pondering one day about the storage buildings, and, you know, we've had a lot of compliments of people coming in and, you know, kind of helping us make a decision to do that, and that's the reason we're doing it. And I think that Union County is really behind us 100%, so they behind us, we're ready to go.
Okay.
We're ready to start tomorrow.
Thank you both for being here.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak at the public hearing on this matter? Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this hearing that did not sign up? Okay. We have no speakers from the public signed up for this public hearing. I will now close the public hearing. The next public hearing on our agenda is item 25-068 regarding conditional rezoning for case CZ-2024-007. Gold Branch, I will open the public hearing and again, recognize Lee Jensen for comments from county staff.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, as you've already stated, this is a rezoning request, 2024 CZ-007, the Gold Branch rezoning. There's a lot of words on this page. Again, this is a request to change the zoning on a parcel on 218 from RA 40 to R4 with conditions. There are a number of conditions associated with this. Again, the applicant is asking, like previously, the applicant on this is asking for a vesting of five years. They'll develop according to the site plan dated November 5th, 2024. They will subdivide out a piece of property that's not included as part of the development. I'll show you where that is when we get to the site plan. They'll meet all the requirements of the Union County Development Ordinance. They will be subject to the conceptual master plan that was submitted as part of the rezoning application. They'll meet the post-construction stormwater requirements of the 210 and 50-year storm events. There's a number of design guidelines on here, variety of building materials, and then you can see there's a list of types of materials that they can use. Accessory structures have to be the same architect- Accessory structures have to be the same architectural style as the house. They have to meet their requirements of the TIA. That includes meeting any off-site improvements required by NC DOT. And prior to the platting of the 400th home, the developer would agree to contribute $500,000 to Union County towards improvements at the Mill Grove, Lawyer's Road, Roundabout, or other road improvements in the general vicinity of the project. And NC 218 and Access 1, which I'll point out on the site plan in just a minute, there'll be an eastbound right-in, it's essentially a right-in, right-out movement at that intersection. And then Mill Grove and Access 2, which again, I'll point out on the site plan, that will be a full movement, and I'll show you where that is on the site plan. It'll be an age-restricted community, so 55 and older. So what that means is at least 80% of the units have to have at least one occupant who is 55 years or older. So that's, and I can let the applicant, the applicant will probably want to give a little more detail on that, but that's generally what that means. It's 80%, and one person in that house has to be 55. And then there's some things in here about future amendments to the plan. They'll have to come back to the board to ask for those. They can make some minor tweaks based on staff approval, but any major tweaks would have to come back before the board. And that's all the conditions. Here's the site plan. Again, I said I would point out where those access points were. This is the access onto 218. So again, that's a right-in, right-out. I believe there's a median that will be constructed to prevent those left turns onto 218. And this is the access onto Mill Grove. So there'll be a number, that's a full movement. There'll be a number of improvements associated with both of those. Total number of lots is 727. So looking at the site, this is looking at the site from 218. This is a site from Mill Grove Road. So you can see it's pretty rural out there currently. And then this is looking south from Rock Hill Church Road from the site and from Russell Road. So you can see it's a pretty rural area, not a lot of development out there currently. So this is the development status. You can see these are the rezoning parcels. This is the piece that would be cut off, that's not part of the rezoning. I just wanted to point that out. Not, again, not a lot of development out in the area. There are some subdivisions. Again, you've got, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of this neighborhood off the top of my head, but there's a golf course community down to it. That's it, thank you. Yep, Old Sycamore, that's fairly close by. There's a couple of newer subdivisions that are on 218 that are sort of across the street. Those are, I think there's a cluster neighborhood, which is a one-acre density neighborhood, but, actually, that may have been a R20 neighborhood, so it may be a two-units-per-acre density, but it's clustered. And then there's another one that's just one-acre lots directly across the street. There is a fairly large stream that runs through the site. So you can see here, there's some wetlands and floodplain associated with that stream, and a couple of other tributaries that run into that. And one small area of wetlands that the development team would have to take a look at if it was approved and they went further into the development process. Otherwise, there's no other major environmental features on that, on the property. The zoning districts currently in the area, this light green is the RA 40, so that's the one-acre minimum lot size density. The kind of this darker green and the yellow down here, that's RA 20 and R20, so those are half-acre density. So one unit per half-acre, so that's the density on those. And then the gray areas here, the one sort of on the right-hand side of your screen, that's the town of Fairview. So we don't do their zoning, but we do want to note that there is a municipality close by. And then to the south, you see this gray area, that is the town of Stallings. In terms of transportation, we have a few traffic counts from 2021 and 2017. 218 was the 2021, that's about 9,600 vehicle trips per day. And Mill Grove Road in 2021 was about 1,100. And then Rock Hill Church Road in 2017 was 1,300 trips per day. And the Land Use Map, again, this shows rural residential. So this is the adopted 2050 Union County Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map, so it does indicate that this area would be that rural residential, one unit per acre maximum density. This is age-restricted development, so schools were not consulted for comments. Public water is available at the site. They would say they would tie into public water. Sewer's not available to the site, so they will utilize a private engineered community septic system for sewer service. Community meeting was held back in January, about 55 people attended. They asked questions about process for the rezoning, traffic impacts, tax impacts of the development, asked about rentals and fire response. No changes were made by the applicant based on that feedback. We have received several emails opposing or asking questions about the development. As far as municipal feedback, we did solicit feedback from Stallings and Fairview since they are adjacent or close, very close by to the project. We did get feedback from Stallings and Fairview that opposed the project. Fairview noted they had some concerns about transportation, the private septic systems, and just overall density. Stallings noted that they would prefer, if this went forward, that they could annex the property as future development occurs, that they'd be able to annex that. And they also noted traffic, stormwater, and the private sewer service concerns. I will note about the annexation issue that Stallings doesn't touch this piece of property. I'll go back to this. So these parcels highlighted in black are the properties that are part of the rezoning, and Stallings is here in gray. So there's a few pieces of property that are in between this one and the town. I did have a conversation with the town staff just to find out, because you can do satellite annexations in North Carolina. However, this would exceed the amount that they're allowed to do. So it would have to touch the town of Stallings for them to be able to annex. Again, that's just based on my conversation with the town planning staff. So as far as positives, negatives, and recommendations, the Comprehensive Plan identifies this area again as rural residential. So it's recommended for low-density residential and agricultural purposes. And the proposed use would add over 3,000 trips per day to area roads with potential of increasing delays and congestion at multiple area intersections. There are a few positives. The proposed use of an age-restricted development would have a reduced traffic impact when you compare it to impacts from comparable non-age-restricted development. So if this were a non-age-restricted development, the traffic impact's lower. It won't add students to local schools, because students, kids aren't allowed in the development per their covenants. It is similar to some other uses in the county's zoning jurisdiction that are zoned residential. If you look kind of going south and west into the town of Stallings, there are a number of, I'll call them denser neighborhoods. So it is similar to some of those. But based on all of that information, staff recommended denial, and the planning board also recommended denial when they considered this item. And that was unanimous vote as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know the development team's here. I think they have a large number of folks that are probably going to present some items.
Thank you. Lee, I'd like to understand how Stallings opposed this development, but then wanted to annex the development if it occurred. So can you shed some light on?
Sure.
One leg in and one leg out?
Sure. And that was probably not worded very well. What, I think what Stallings meant by that was that as development occurs in the area close to their borders, they would rather annex anything that occurs so they could kind of control what happened on that property. So it wasn't necessarily that they, I don't know that they like or dislike this development. I don't know. But I don't think it necessarily had to do with this development. I think they just wanted to be able to annex any development that occurred in that area. Again, they did note concerns over traffic, this private septic systems. I believe there's another one in there, but.
So there's a lot of new homes that have gone up in that area. Has Stallings inquired about annexing? Because there's so many new beautiful homes out there? Or are they only interested in annexing if this development occurs? I'm a little bit, I'm still confused on the word oppose.
Right. I think the opposition came from the concerns about traffic, stormwater, and the private sewer service. I think the, and that's why I said this was probably not worded very well. I think that they would just prefer to annex any property in the area as development occurred. They would rather developers approach the town and work with the town through their development process to annex.
Are there any other questions? Yeah.
I just want to clarify some things. So the statutes for how annexation works have changed over the years, and so it's significantly more difficult to annex property once it's already developed. The easiest time to annex the property is before it's approved and before the subdivision exists, because after that, then all property owners have to be part of that. Right now, there's only a handful of property owners or one. But when you start subdividing and selling lots, it makes it a lot more challenging. So I'm assuming that Stallings is looking at it from a standpoint of, they would rather, if they were going to do it, they would want to do it while it's undeveloped, so then they could guide that development process.
Right.
And so your question about the other homes that are out there, they likely would not be able to do annexation, because those property owners would have to agree.
Right.
And that's a little more of a challenge. Yep.
Yes.
Mr. Jensen, can we go back, I believe it's the site slide? That, yes. Let's see. On 218, it's right-in, right-out, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But on Mill Grove, it's either direction. When Mill Grove hits 218, is there a roundabout there now?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
I can't remember, because there's a bazillion roundabouts on 218 now?
There's not one there. There's one.
There is one, yes.
I can't remember.
Yeah, Mill Grove and 218, yeah.
Yeah, I can't remember. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And yeah, I think that the 2021 study of 9,600 cars on that, I think that's lowballing it. From somebody that's not far from 218, I think that's a very low-ball number.
Are there any other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Sodz.
There's also a roundabout if you come down Mill Grove at Lawyer's Road?
Yes.
Okay. A private sewer system, if anything would happen to that, any kind of malfunction, is that the county's responsibility or is that a state issue?
So there's some legislation that allows these types of private septic systems to move forward. I may have to defer to Jason on this, but the legislation, I think, basically puts the responsibility of that septic system on the designer of that septic system. So if that, if it doesn't work, then that designer is responsible. It doesn't put any responsibility on the county or a government agency.
Okay, all right. I thought I noted in the Critical Intersection Program, another planned improvement on 218, was that down further?
There, yes. I'm drawing a blank on the intersection. There was a four-way stop at one intersection, which I believe has been implemented, and I think there's another roundabout on 218.
Okay, all right.
But I don't think they're in the immediate vicinity of this.
Right, it's further.
Further east.
Yeah, that's at Love Mill.
That's right, yes.
So by right in the RA 40, how many homes would be permissible?
I mean, you would take the total acreage, multiply it by, and we'll get technical here, 43, 560, then divide it by 40,000. And that, but you're also, you have some things that have to be taken out up front. So you have to take out your floodplain. You don't have to take out stream buffers in this case, because this is not in the 12 Mile Creek service area. So those buffers don't count. Usually, the floodplain's wider than the stream buffers anyway. So you have to take out the floodplain, and then since this is in the rural part of the county as described in the Comprehensive Plan, there's also the 30% open space requirement. So those have to come out, oh, and existing and proposed road right-ofways. All that comes out off the top. Then you take your net density, do that math, and then you have your total number of lots. But this is also going to be on septic or some sort of community septic, so you've got to take that into consideration too. And you're looking at larger lot sizes. So if it was RA 40, you'd be looking at 40,000 square foot lots, or potentially 20,000 square foot lots if they could figure out how to cluster it.
So that would be basically each house would have a septic tank?
Potentially, I mean, they could, they could still use a community septic system kind of like this.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? No, Brian?
Madam Chair. Thank you, Lee. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions, Lee. So the applicant here is Coulter, correct?
Yes, sir.
And Coulter has done, you know, many other projects within the county.
Yes, sir.
So is this not the same applicant that also did other projects like Heritage, for example, and Crest Winds?
They were the applicant on Crest Winds, and I believe they were associated as well with the Heritage project.
Okay. So a couple of questions. Number one is about stormwater mitigation. Obviously, stormwater has been a complaint that we've received coming from Crest Winds. What type of mitigation is being planned here for this particular project?
So this will meet the 210 and 50-year storm events. That's the amendment that you made a number of months ago. So they've agreed to meet that requirement.
Okay, thanks, sir. A couple of things that stuck out to me in what you presented tonight and also what was in our agenda packet. One of the things was that at least 80% of the units must have only one person above the age of 55.
Yes, sir.
So we've got a remainder of 20% that can be of essentially any age. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But you said that the covenants do not allow children?
That's my understanding. I would, you probably want to ask that question of the applicant when they get up.
All right. The other question that I've got, and maybe this is a question for the applicant as well, is in our agenda packet, and one thing that stuck out to me was that it's stated here in the community meeting that was held January 7th, 2025, approximately 55 residents attended the meeting, and they had asked about the process for rezoning, traffic concerns, mill from septic tanks, you know, amongst other things that they had brought up. And it says here that there were no changes made based off feedback. Why?
So a lot of times during those, where is that at? Well, a lot of times during those community meetings, the questions are answered during the community meeting. So for example, and I don't know this for sure, but for example, if you had a question about the process for the rezoning, we would have had staff there. Bjorn attended the community meeting, and he would have answered the question about the process. If there were questions about traffic impacts, the applicant would generally try to answer that question about the traffic impact. And they would try to explain whatever that question was. You know, is there going to be a full movement access on 218? Well, no, we're going to do a right-in, right-out. So a lot of times, those questions are addressed during the community meeting. You know, sometimes there are questions that. You know, sometimes there are questions that linger after a community meeting, and then the applicant can choose to make a change to the site plan or not. Sometimes it's feasible, sometimes it's not feasible. Sometimes you get a comment that, I don't want the development. And of course, the applicant's going to say, well, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to pull my rezoning application. Sometimes you do get applicants that may lower density somewhat, they may pull a few lots out. Sometimes, I believe we've had a few where some neighbors were in opposition to a project, and maybe the applicant offered an additional buffer between the proposed development and their house, much like the previous rezoning where you had the fence. So we've had that happen a number of times. But sometimes, either the applicant can't accommodate some of those comments, or they don't. And maybe you could ask the applicant, you know, if we didn't notice any changes based on, but maybe there were some subtle changes that we, maybe we didn't pick up. So that might be a good question for the applicant as well.
Thank you, Lee.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is the applicant here tonight?
They are.
For the applicant, I would, do want to recognize them and offer them 15 minutes if they would like to do a presentation or speak.
They have a presentation. I'm just going to go ahead and get it pulled up.
Thank you for having us this evening. We do have a team. My name is Emily Powell. I'm with Coulter Homes. Jason Galloway is with us as well. And up here with me is both Jonathan Crowder with Merrick, who is our planner, and Kevin Presley, Class 4 sewer operator. We also have our traffic engineer. We have our municipal engineer. I believe that's everybody on the team, so we'll be minding our 15 minutes. Thank you all for having us this evening, and thank you, staff. We have been working on this since 2023. Let me see if I can get this. There we go. So Coulter Homes, we are a private regional company. You can see our footprint here. We have two Crest Wind communities here in Charlotte. We have one community in the Wesley Chapel area and one community in Charlotte. Crest Wind is our branded community, age restricted. It is our only Coulter Homes community here in the county. So tonight, we are proposing 727 homes, as Lee shared. We are age restricted, and I will share exactly what that means and what those requirements are, as well as our HOA documents. We will have a range of homes that size from about 1,400 square feet to 2,800 square feet. We have heavily amenitized community that serves the 55 and better buyer and homeowner, and allows them to recreate within their community. There are zero children in the community, I will share that as well. And this will be planned with private streets, yard maintenance included. It is a forever home mentality. Our home buyers have typically purchased one or two homes in their past, and they know specifically what they're looking for, and they are looking for just the right fit in their, in their final home. From an age restricted, we do follow HUD's federal housing requirements, and this is an 80% that must be 55 and older. This is an anti-discrimination ruling that is federal that we must follow. We cannot discriminate for people under the age of 80 to live in the home. So it is something that we track. It is something we have to report federally. So it is something that is tracked, and you will see that we track that on our leases as well. And that is a condition to the zoning request that we are making this evening. In our HOA documents, and this is some of information that was asked at the community meeting about leasing and rentals, which I did not have that knowledge off the top of my head, so we did share this at planning on the leasing. But in our HOA documents, we do have requirements that a child cannot establish residency within the community, and there is a restriction for the number of times and days that they can visit within the community. This is in the HOA declaration. For any rental in the community that occurs, a homeowner must live in the home for 18 months before they choose to lease, if they were to lease, if that was to occur. We do have a 5% cap on that. That's not typically what occurs in our communities, but we do cap that at 5%. The board is required to review that, confirm that, again, we would be minding the 55 and older requirements, and the lease has to state the 55 and older requirements as well. So our homeowners in the Crest Wind age restricted communities are 55 and better. They do have a high level of wealth and disposable income that they spend locally within the community. Some are working, some are not. They have the flexibility to travel during a variety of times on the road versus a more traditional family buyer that has children in the school and is all working. So you'll see that when we get to traffic numbers. There's a little bit of a different timing of those trips on the road. They're also able to volunteer more in the community. And this is, our typical buyer is a baby boomer. This goes to disposable income in that bracket. I'm going to keep moving just because we have a lot of slides. And they're spending, again, that same age bracket. So our 727 homes that we are proposing, this would equate to a little over 19 million spent locally in goods and services, over 3 million in yearly taxes, including over 300 to Fairview Fire and Rescue. That was one thing that was asked as well in the community meeting, was the fire and rescue, where it went, and making sure that those folks in our community would be funding that even if they were not in the town limits. So this was a response to that. For our transportation, and we will dig in a little more at the end on the location of improvements, but our age, our 55 and older folks do have the ability to adjust their trips. As a result of that, if you were to compare our community in the morning, it would be the morning rush hour, which is 7 to 9. It would be the same as 284 traditional homes in that morning rush hour time. And then in the evening, it would be the same as 233 in that same timeframe. From a, from a school impact, obviously, we will restrict, we will have no children in the school. Lee did share a little bit, if we were to develop by right, and that is our 40, we would cluster in that scenario and do 389 homes, based on the census data that is available for Union County. That's just under 300 children in the school system versus the zero children that we would have in the school system. Some parks and recreation data. Generally, the senior population has a 20% usage of parks and recs. This is a general stat, which would mean our community would have 247 people visiting existing parks and recreation. However, ours will actually be recreating internally within the community, so that number would be lower. That's not a number that I have, but I just wanted to share that. A traditional community has a lot higher rate, less homes, more people per home, higher rate would equate to just under 1,000 people using local parks and recreation facilities. From an active adult and their engagement in the community, they do volunteer at a very high level. Just this year, one of our communities in Georgia, Lake Lanier, celebrated they had raised over $1 million to assist local seniors in need in their counties. That's both food banks, grandparents assisting grandchildren, financial grants. It's something that started grassroots in the community. And a lot of our homeowners do move in from other areas. They want to establish roots in the community, and they want to help others. So they do have the ability to do that. From public services, you'll see from an ambulance perspective, we are very similar in trips to those that are in the 18 to 44-year-old category, and our average homeowner is 68 years. Again, we're minding that 55 and older. There is a range in the community. Some awards we've won on lifestyle. Lifestyle is a huge aspect of why someone will move into our community. We are heavily amenitized in the clubhouse. We have this e-gym equipment that is on the left. We have a patent on it. It adjusts to your body. We have traditional equipment. We have pools, bocce, pickleball, et cetera. But that is a primary reason that someone is looking to move into our community. Here's the location with respect to the county. You can see 485 and 218, where this blue star right here, as Lee shared earlier. Just some general data on the state of North Carolina and housing needs moving forward. There is a gap in for-sale product that is available, that will be available between 2024 and '29. You can see Union County circled here. It's about 13,000 units below what is needed to supply. And if you look at both for-sale and rental, Union County ranks number nine out of 100 states in the county as the largest need for supply in the state of North Carolina. Projected change in household, this is households where the main owner, homeowner is under the age of 35. Union County is actually the highest percent change in this category of all 100 counties in the state. So looking to see a lot, a lot more younger households in the county, which will have schoolchildren and will soon be having schoolchildren. And you can see future growth in the 55 and older category as well. Rezoning plan, I'm going to skip. Lee hit it already. Same with conditions. Jonathan, you want to share a little on site plan?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. Jonathan Crowder. I live in Charlotte, North Carolina, and with the time, I will be brief in my remarks. What I would like to just point out here is a few things on the site plan specifically, focused on the open space of the plan. This particular slide, we're highlighting a couple of things, mainly the amenity area. It's about 8.4 acres. That represents the clubhouse, the pool, that's highly amenitized. That's a big part of why people join this neighborhood. The other item to note here is that within each block of the subdivision, you know, our back of lots don't directly attach, right? We've got open space, in this example, 25 feet from back of lot to back of lot. So we do provide additional open space in the neighborhood to help with the overall feel of the neighborhood. This slide shows a quick example of an amenity building, the pool, the bocce courts. As everybody knows, bocce is the best sport in the world right now, and so everybody wants to play. And so that will be a large part of that amenity section as well. Here's, again, a picture from the Wesley Chapel Crest Wind, and so the entrance will be similar here to this example. Again, just kind of the guardhouse. I don't know if it was mentioned, but it's a gated community, right? That's a part of the information here, so all the streets will be private streets. This slide, again, I'll move quickly here. One thing was mentioned about the community, the neighborhood meeting. You know, we, I think from a plan perspective, offered a lot beyond what was required, and one of those examples is the buffers we have around the site. Zoning requires 10 feet. We're showing 40 for most of the site. That's actually 100 feet along the street, along this edge. And so we feel like we've already kind of gone there, right? Because it's important to the neighborhood, it's important to the residents, really to go above and beyond on some of those things. And I think this, my last slide, I'll just kind of end here for time, just highlighted the open space. Again, we've talked about the stream that's there and the swim buffers or the buffers, the floodplains, et cetera. So all of that is calculated here, and add it all together, it's roughly 230 acres of the site is really set aside as open space. So with that, I will transition to the next one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, Mr. Matthews, Ms. West, good to see you. So we got two minutes. I can talk about wastewater, or if y'all want to ask me a question, if the Madam Chair will allow, and let Emily do her presentation, or however you want to do it, because I know we can't get them both done in two minutes.
We'll let you speak for two minutes, and then if we have questions.
Okay, all right. So what I want to do is I want to deal with kind of the thought process of what is the private wastewater. I've got one in Hemmy Bridge. We all think of wastewater as this big pool of, you know, the stuff, and they shoot it up in the air, and that aerates, and it comes back down, and you got the odor and smell. This is not it. This is a decentralized wastewater treatment plant. We actually have slides. Emily, you want to work this slide here?
Yeah.
Everything is below ground. We are actually treating the water that goes to the equivalent of rainwater when it's dispersed out. Back up just one second. Our first treatment is a step tank that's at the house, which is like a traditional septic tank. The solids go in, it goes to a baffle, and we're only, it's already starting this process with the microorganisms right off the bat. It then goes to several tanks. I think we've got 60,000 gallon tanks that this, all this goes through the process, and if you want to roll it up again. And then we go through the treatment. What we actually do is we take a treatment, and there are some slides over here that we could show you of the actual plants, and typically, these plants are about the size of a long bed pickup, about the width of it. And I think we've got four of them going in for this particular build-out. We actually do the aeration inside these vaulted tanks. And basically, what that does, it does its process in there underground. The tanks is actually leveled with covers. I know that was a big issue, everybody was thinking about odor smell. But we have eliminated that. We do go to a subsurface system that, once it leaves, you can see the clarity of the water right there. That actually came out of the plant that we, that we went and took another visit here about three weeks ago. You can see the size of the plant on the left-hand side, and the clarity of the water, once it goes through this process, that's the way it comes out and goes to the drain field itself. So that's, that's basically it on our side. Unless you've got some questions, I'd be glad to answer any more technical part of or anything I could do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Anyone has? Okay. No questions. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking specifically for Mr. Presley. I do have a general question. Could you explain your folks' past history involvement with the Heritage subdivision? You didn't mention that as one of your developments in Union County. Were you involved in that project?
No. I work with Coulter Homes. Coulter Homes does the Crest Wind branded communities. We build only age restricted or age-targeted communities. We don't have a two-story product or a townhome product. They're all one-story. We can do the traditional. It would be a one-story with second floor optional, but we really try and do our Crest Wind and do it well. So we have a community here in Union County. It is Crest Wind Wesley Chapel. There are four other Coulter companies, but they are not Coulter Homes. Coulter Homes, we are here requesting the rezoning. We would be the developer, and we would be the builder. You're welcome.
I've got actually a question for staff. How many 55-plus communities do we have here in Union County?
Yeah, we did a map, but I, there have been...
Espinade and Epcun.
Gosh, I'm probably, there's maybe two handfuls, if that many.
There's the one in Indian Trail.
Yeah, there's Espinade.
Espinade.
There's the Crest Wind Wesley Chapel. There's two or three, and that's in the county. There are two or three in the town of Wesley Chapel. There's, I know one of those is a courtyard product. I believe there's another courtyard product also in Union County.
Emerald Lakes.
That's right. And I believe there's a third one. There's a second one up on Lawyer's Road as well.
Yeah, that's right.
And then the Encore project down on Cuthbertson Road. So there's two on Cuthbertson Road. One's a courtyard, and one is an Encore project. So that's, I wouldn't keep in count, but that's probably seven, seven or eight. And I do have a map, so I can follow up with you a little bit later and give you that exact number.
That would be great.
I will do that.
Commissioner Ballroom.
Emily, do the four other Coulter companies share common ownership?
Yes, so there are... Yes, so there are five Coulter companies. We're all run separately. The owner of Coulter Homes does own four other Coulter companies.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Helms.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lee, if you don't mind, just to further comment on Commissioner Helms' request, could you circulate that to all the board members, please?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak at the public hearing for this matter? I believe we have two. You're with me? I have a lot of papers here. The first speaker is Doug Buchanan.
Madam Chairman, the board, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm Doug Buchanan. I live at five thirteen Heritage View Road. I'm a resident of Union County. I live in the town of Fairview. Quick background, I have a Bachelor of Science of Engineering from UNCC, where I majored and minored in civil engineering. So I've had just brief opportunities to look at the information itself, and just some unusual things sort of pop up. One of them, I think, because I am the engineering background, I look at the radius for a cul-de-sac. When I asked at the public meetings, it meets standard. Made me go and investigate a little bit more. The best I could tell from the PDF, the radius for that cul-de-sac is twenty-five feet. Now, I believe the county standards is fifty-three feet, which agrees with the federal guidelines for transportation itself. So that seems a little too small to me for a fire truck, immersive vehicles. Also, dump trucks has always turned up everything itself. I appreciate the explanation on the wastewater, because that was a lot more information was given at the public meeting itself. Going through the transportation study, one of the things that really stood out, it stood out even more tonight to me, is the transportation study did not account for the twenty percent of people that's going to be in the subdivision that is less than fifty-five years old. Now, those are going to probably generate trips that they're not even really accounting for. Now, if you look at table five-point-one, and you start looking at there, it's a peak hourly flow vehicles itself. That represents sixteen percent of the population of the houses in this. It's not even twenty percent. And I don't know about you, I know most people that are fifty-five and older to sixty-five, they're still working. Unless they've got a lot more money than I do, because I'm still working myself. So that, you know, I feel like the numbers in this is skewed. They were talking about trip generations of being three thousand trips per twenty-four hours. There again, everybody I know that's fifty-five and older, they don't go out at midnight, go clubbing. I don't know everybody, but there could be some. So I think my gut feeling, because I'm running out of time, is that the traffic study is skewed. It doesn't really represent the full thing of everything that's going on there. It represents one percent increase until 2033. I asked about the subdivisions that's under construction. They say it's in the one percent. This subdivision's in within one percent. That fills, I don't have actual numbers on that, but all that construction feels like it's coming greater than one percent. That's my time. Okay. Thank you.
Are any speakers in? Ken Worthy.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Ken Worthy. I have lived in Union County for over thirty years and right next to this site the whole time. It is a beautiful area. It is rural and agricultural, something I understand you all support from reading your information on the Internet. So the zoning has been declined by the planning board in the Union County, or the zoning staff and the planning board, and the cities around it have also declined it. So if I can summarize some of the issues I've seen in this development, what I've been involved in, in the groups or the meetings, it's not part of, or it doesn't fit your 2025 plan. It calls for one-acre lots in this area. The high density opens the door for further high-density development in the area, which I, again, don't think would be good for that area. The area isn't able to handle the development until sewer will be added one day. The one acre per home is also recognition of how badly this part of the county does not perk. There is a cost to serve that will be affected in this area. Maybe not specifically by Union County, but some would, some of it would. NC DOT maintains the road. Mill Grove Road is in horrible shape. It has potholes everywhere, flooding on a regular basis, and deterioration on the edges due to the flooding and the poor maintenance in that area. NC DOT has pushed back the repaving of Mill Grove Road multiple times now, although they say it's on the schedule for 2026. I highly doubt it. Heavy construction traffic vehicles will destroy the current deteriorating road. Mill Grove Road lane size is nine foot. I've measured it. A standard dump truck is over nine foot wide. So we already have a hard time passing these vehicles as we're traveling on the road. It would be an additional problem. The future of fifty-five-and-over communities are also questionable, for at some point, the baby boomers are going to be gone, and they're going to have to convert these communities to something else. And at that point, they're going to become first-home buyers, small families, who will then impact these communities in the schools and other areas. Otherwise, the fifty-five and older will impact fire and medical services right now, although I understand they do have money that will be helping them in that. The shared septic system that's being brought out is going to be helped, or will be responsible by Coulter, and they will be leaving that system to the HOA. While Coulter has it, it will be, we have been told, inspected five days a week. It's being developed with a backup system in place. I'm really concerned about an HOA managing this in the future, and that they would keep that up. In addition to that, it also makes me wonder why they need a backup system and inspections five days a week for a system that's supposed to not need anything. There will be other environmental impacts. The shared system could lead to flooding impacting local wildlife as well as water resources. And again, we should wait for sewer development. Coulter has also had some issues with the planning. There are only two entrances and exits for seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven homes. Two access points. That's for over fourteen-hundred people. The two-eighteen, the two-eighteen point, if you're familiar with two-eighteen, it's on an uphill, the right turn would be uphill, on a fifty-five mile-an-hour road in a curve. My request is that you please stay with the 2050 plan, stay with one home per acre in this area, and again, not allow this to go through in a rezoning change. Thank you.
Are there any speakers who have not signed up that wish to speak? I'll start with you, sir. If, um... Or you can speak for him.
My name is Richard Martinez. Long-time resident, second-time speaker ever. I'm going to live directly across from this development. And initially, when I first heard about it, I was opposed to it. In fact, I think many of the people that were here in the first meeting, I was the loudest one. I probably asked more questions than everybody combined. And as a result, a lot of the comments that the Coulter people presented there were some of my things, like I was concerned about leasing, and I was concerned of what's the turnover going to be for all of this. And in doing my research and looking at this and listening to a lot of the comments, I've changed my mind. I actually think that this is going to be a good development for our environment, for our community. I'm going to be, this is my final home that I'm going to live in. This is it for me. So I'm very careful about what's going to be there. And that's one of my concerns, is I have an opportunity to decide, or at least lend voice, what's going to be next to me, or directly across the street from me. And I'm very concerned about what could happen if this does not happen. I see a number of other types of land that's being paved over, and they're driving eighteen-wheelers on there, and they're parking them overnight, and they're charging them for that. And that's one of my concerns. In fact, one of the requests, before this request that came before you, was a storage unit. I don't want a storage unit anywhere near where I live. My concern is that this land is going to be developed anyway. No matter what happens here, it's going to be developed sooner or later. I have an opportunity now to voice what I'd like to have there. And honestly, I'd look at benefits. I'm a very practical person, and a logical person. And I look at this, and I see this is actually going to be in benefit to me directly, but to my community as well. It's a clean environment. I had the opportunity to drive down to the Crestwind and look at that environment. I was very pleased. Everything was clean. It was very well manicured. I didn't see people racing up and down the streets. Much like I see now on Mill Grove, as well as Rock Hill Church Road, I see tire marks. And that's a result of people having kids that are just, or even adults that haven't grown up yet, that are driving around like that. And I don't want that in my neighborhood. I'm also concerned about them piecing this into individual lots, and then turning, you know, people putting trailer parks on there, or, you know, building individual homes that don't meet any real standard. I see this as opportunity, a benefit to all of us, not only from what we get to see, but also from a tax base. I'm not worried about the traffic. The traffic's going to happen no matter what. But I look at the benefit of the tax base and how that's going to lessen the burden on me. We're looking at homes that are six-hundred thousand dollars. That's going to add to the tax base, which is going to lessen the chance that you're going to raise taxes on me, because if something has to be built, now we've got more people to spread the load on. And that's just practical. I'm looking at it that way. I think it's important that we look at this open-mindedly and not worry too much about emotion, and worry about what's going to happen on the roads. It's going to happen anyway. It's going to happen. So again, thank you so much for listening to me.
Good evening. My name's John Linton Senior. I'm a Union County resident, and I live in Fairview. I believe there were actually two meetings that were held, not one, which residents were not in favor of the development. But I would note, I thought the developer did an excellent job in the presentation, and the other public officials also did a great job at the meetings. At the second meeting, which was held here, the officials did indicate their recommendation was to deny the application. I heard an attendee say, as I was sitting in this room, "The request appeared to be asking to fit a square peg into a round hole." Living in the area and traveling these adjoining roads daily, I believe the traffic assumptions are significantly underrated. The assumptions were three to four years old. It's terribly congested right now. And this is a huge development coming into the rural scene. And the capacity today isn't it being considered for the other public services for these seven-hundred people, the CVSs, the other kind of things for those kind of people, which is, again, going to be bringing in more traffic. I don't think that, we mentioned about the five-hundred jobs that are going to be created through this, which is more traffic. All those trucks, as one gentleman said, the big trucks coming in. We didn't mention about all of the services, the Amazon trucks. All of these kind of trucks and services for these seven-hundred people is significant. If you ride on these roads today, they're in bad shape. They're extremely congested. Coming off of Noah Helms Road onto, those people will not be able to make that turn with this additional traffic. And this is going to go on for nine years. This building will go on for nine years for this additional traffic that's going to be coming through. And it's already congested today. And I think, as you said, the one gentleman said about the plan, again, I do think a good description of this is the builder did a great job, very professional. But it is, in my opinion, living right there. It's like a square peg in a round hole. Thank you very much.
We have one more speaker?
I'll be brief. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thanks.
My biggest concern is I live on Russell Road, and there...
I'm sorry, sir, could you introduce yourself?
Mark Carpenter.
Okay.
And I live on Russell Road. And there is a retired couple that lives about two-hundred yards away. And their septic tank is on their property. Their leach field is up kind of near the front of mine. It's just two people retired. And when it's been moist or rainy or whatever, we can actually smell that. So my biggest concern is this seven-hundred-and-twenty homes and all their liquids and, you know, the septic system that they're proposing at the end of our road. Do we have guarantees that we're not going to smell anything? So that's really just my main concern, is it'll devalue our properties and everything else, if it does.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers that did not sign up that wish to speak on this hearing? Yes?
I've spoken, but could I speak on just a personal behalf?
Yes, you may.
I'll be real quick. Some of the gentlemen, the gentleman that spoke about it, Kevin Presley, Hemmy Bridge, y'all know who I am. We have actual data with our traffic impact analysis that was requested to be done by Union County versus 2017 versus 2019. So we have our analysis person here that could give you to-date information. And I, you know, just a couple of things. I want to say that that's how you get road improvements. That's how you just, because I've served on Mumpo, you guys have. And then when these, when these roads are being used more, that's how you get the money to do it, is they come in and they pave the roads because they're being used. On this traffic study, and Bjorn will tell you, you know, I know he's out tonight, but there's not even a place, and I agree that, you know, that we have narrow roads. But again, and I don't know where the gentleman got the nine-foot dump truck. I have dump trucks, and mine's not nine-foot. So I don't know where he got that information. But we're giving you factual information that we have, that your staff requested for us. And we have the data that is up to date and spent a lot of money. The study on the septic system is a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars just for that study to be able to be able to put that wastewater treatment plant in. So there's a lot of things that are being kind of generalized, like there's not going to be any baby boomers after these, after, I guess there's nobody else going to be baby boomers, these other generation. I don't know what's going to happen to them. But this is a continuing thing that we've showed you, that the data that this is going to be needed, and it's going to increase. So all I was just asking is tonight, is I know that emotions get into play, but your staff has asked us to give information, and we have done that. And I just want to make sure that you guys know that we have done what you requested instead of a generality with emotions behind it. Thank you.
Are there any more speakers that did not sign up to speak? I will now close the public hearing.
Well, I just have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Jensen, the Coulter folks made a statement of by right, there would be three-hundred-and-eighty-nine homes. Could you verify that for our next meeting when this is under consideration?
Yes, sir.
I just want to know what the alternatives. If this community, if this request is declined, what is the, what are the potential consequences of a by-right residential construction in this, on this land?
Yes, sir. I can do that. I understand that there will be some estimating involved, but I can get you close.
Okay.
And I think it was in the presentation as well, because they, it offered up that, you know, those single-family homes would generate, you know, X number of students in the schools.
I'd just like staff to verify the numbers.
Okay.
Coulter folks gave out.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay. I will now close the public hearing. The next public hearing is item twenty-five dash zero-nine-six concerning a Step Two Economic Development Incentive Grant in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand. Everyone, if you could please, we are conducting a meeting. If you could please not talk, so that we can continue. Thank you so much. I'm going to start over. The next public hearing is item twenty-five dash zero-nine-six concerning a Step Two Economic Development Incentive Grant in an ame- Grant in an amount not to exceed $133,000 over a five-year period to Southern Electrical Equipment Company Incorporated, Project Homecoming. I will open the public hearing and recognize Ron Mail, our Economic Development Director, for comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Manager Matthews. It's my pleasure to bring before you tonight an Economic Development Incentive Grant request by Southern Electrical Equipment Company Incorporated, otherwise referred to as Project Homecoming. Again, Southern Electrical Equipment Company, or CECO, is a manufacturer of transmission and substation equipment used in the electric utility industry. CECO has been in business for 105 years. The company is headquartered in Mecklenburg County, where they employ 82 people, and they have a satellite facility here in Union County in the Old Hickory Business Park in Indian Trail, where they have 28 employees. Their goal is to consolidate all business operations to Union County. To accomplish that goal, CECO is considering the following: the purchase and outfit of an existing 109,000-square-foot building on 15 acres of land located at 4862 Corporate Center Drive in Monroe. Anticipated capital investment is approximately $7 million, which breaks out as $5 million of outfit to the building and $2 million in new production equipment. A consolidation onto Corporate Center Drive would be a net gain of 82 new jobs to Union County. And these positions pay an average annual wage of approximately $64,000 a year. The company has indicated that incentives are a very important factor for their project. Therefore, tonight, we're requesting your consideration of a Step Two Economic Development Incentive Grant in an amount not to exceed $133,000, paid over five years, beginning in fiscal year 2027. The grant will be based upon the Union County Tax Office's appraised value each year on the company's anticipated investment of $7 million in the building outfit and new production equipment. Based on this investment and holding all other factors constant, including depreciation, the company would pay estimated ad valorem taxes on that new taxable investment of $205,800 over that same five-year grant period. Of course, actual tax revenue to Union County will be based on the current tax rate applied to the assessed value of the investment each year. Therefore, the Union County Department of Economic Development, I like saying that, recommends the award of this Step Two Performance-Based Economic Development Incentive Grant to Southern Electrical Equipment Company in an amount not to exceed $133,000 to help secure not only this $7 million investment but the related jobs. At this time, it's my pleasure to recognize Andrew Panto and his wife, Kristi. Andrew is CEO and owner, and Kristi is Director of Special Projects, and they're available to answer any questions that you may have on the project, as am I. With that, thank you.
First, welcome. Is there anything you'd like to share with us?
Just that we are, again, we are, we're Union County residents ourselves. We are actually in Marvin, North Carolina. Our kids have been through CADA, you know, Marvin. And our company was actually established in 1920, and we've been in Charlotte that whole time. We started, you know, in, near where they're doing a lot of development off South Boulevard. And we've been in our current location since about 1948 or 1950. And we've just expanded to the point where we can no longer fit in that area. Mecklenburg County in Charlotte to them is kind of in this mode of building a lot of condominiums and microbreweries. So basically, the whole area is kind of changing away from the environment that we are accustomed to over the years. I've been involved in the company since 1994 and I've grown the company quite a bit and I continue to, my desire is to continue to do so. I've got, right now, I've got two children that are involved in the business. I call them children, but they're older. So we're preparing, you know, the company for the next level of growth. We, basically, our customers are not local. I mean, some of them are, but for the most part, our customers are utilities throughout the United States and overseas. We do a lot of work in South America, Central America. We've just recently shipped some equipment down to Australia. We do a lot in Canada, just all over wherever there's a tap and a tie point, basically, is where we do what we do. We are a clean manufacturer. We, you know, we, we're just, it's kind of a nice environment in terms of bringing money into an area because, again, we are not a, you know, a local service company. We're actually bringing our manufacturer and we're bringing money into the area. So we appreciate your time.
Yeah.
And any questions for me?
Any questions? Right. Thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clark, has anyone signed up to speak at the public hearing for this matter? We have no speakers from the public who signed up for this hearing. Are there any speakers that would, that did not sign up that would like to speak on this matter? Okay. I will now close the public hearing. The next item on the agenda is item 25-092, Special Recognition, Union County Water Safety Awards. I want to recognize Michael Farrar, Risk and Safety Program Manager, for this item. Hi, Mike.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Union County Management Team. My name's Mike Farrar and I serve as the Risk and Safety Program Manager here with Union County. Tonight, we would like to recognize Union County Water for receiving the Walter J. Coromand Safety Award and George W. Burke Safety Awards. Each year, North Carolina One Water honors municipal water and wastewater facilities that have maintained an outstanding safety record the previous calendar year, including consistent collection and reporting of injury data. Union County Water is proud to receive both awards this year. Why are these awards so important? What do they mean? How are they earned? I know those are really important questions. Union County Water has been a leader among North Carolina utilities for over 12 years with a dedicated on-staff, safety professional and in-house training programs. These programs cover a broad range of safety topics, including lockout-tagout, work zone safety, confined space entry, and 19 other safety industry-specific subjects. Every employee in Union County Water receives an initial position-specific training, safety equipment, PPE, and ongoing certifications for all associated risks. With 172 employees, the safety program meets over 680 annual training needs and manages 185 safety-related certifications. Additionally, the organization has well-established emergency action plans, reporting systems, incident investigation protocols, job site inspections, and risk assessment programs. So Union County Water doesn't just do safety well, they have established and built a safety culture. I'd also like to thank County Manager Brian Matthews, Assistant County Manager Clayton Vournier, Deputy County Manager Patrick Nylund, Water Administrator Hung Yi, Water Directors Aubrey Lofton and Amy McCaskill, John Schutak and Chris Clark for reinforcing the safety culture and enabling staff to develop this very important program. I'd like to end by quoting Union County Water's own Julian Coley. "At Union County Water, safety is more than just training, inspections, and reporting. It is a core value that defines the workplace culture. The safety program continuously works to protect the most valuable asset, which are the employees." If we could have Hung, Julian, and Chris come forward.
Coming around.
Yeah.
Picture.
More up to the front.
Us two?
Are we in the-
No, I want you in. I'm just trying to make sure I see everybody. Okay. All right. One, two.
It's so nice to have our employees here and the important work that you do, and congratulations on a job well done. Much appreciated. It is now time for consideration of the agenda and consent agenda. Are there any motions regarding requests, revisions, or amendments to either the consent agenda or the business agenda?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I made the motion that we approve the consent agenda as published.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are now at the business portion of the agenda. The first item on the business agenda is 25-097, Consider a Step Two Economic Development Incentive Grant in the Amount Not to Exceed $133,000 Over a Five-Year Period to Southern Electrical Equipment Company Incorporated, also known as Project Homecoming. I will recognize Ron Mail, and he likes to hear this, Economic Development Director for Union County.
Again, Madam Chair, thank you. Again, available for any questions you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ron?
Madam Chair? More of a comment, it's not really a question. First of all, thank you, sir, for being here. Very impressive that your company has been in business since 1920. You know, I've certainly got an appreciation for that and, again, thank you for being here. Ron, thank you to your, to you and your team too, because you guys have been working really hard to bring us opportunities, you know, like this. And I can assure you that we're just as proud of you guys as what you may be proud to work for the county. So, again, thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you. And I really have to mention Rachel Holsman, my Assistant Director, and Megan Gibson, our Business Manager. So, thank you.
Sure. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion that we approve the action requested and award a Step Two Economic Development Incentive Grant in an amount not to exceed $133,000 over a five-year period and, two, authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute an agreement substantially consistent with this agenda item.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next on our agenda is item 25-113, Jail Discussion. I will recognize our county manager, Brian Matthews, concerning this item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is a request the board had some additional information that you wanted to receive related to the jail study and the decision on how to move forward with this particular item. One of the things that you asked for is sort of a timeline for how we got to where we are. This is a long timeline. This thing started a long time ago and so I'm going to try and get as much of that in as possible. It really started in 1990 when there was a complaint that was filed related to the conditions of the jail. Now, it was, it was more than just that it was overcrowding in the jail. There were other things related to that, but there was a complaint filed. Ultimately, in 1992, there was actually a consent order issued by the courts saying that we must build a new jail. And as you can see, that jail opened in 1994. That was fast. You don't usually build things that quick, but we did and we were able to get that open in late 1994 and the jail has been what we operate since then. Fast forward to 2004, you had a situation where the jail population actually exceeded its rated capacity. Now, you notice that shows 240. The jail actually holds 264 beds, I believe, but there's a rated capacity. That's based on, you have classifications of inmates, male, female, known associates, violent, nonviolent, and you put all that together and then you have a rated capacity and that's where the 240 comes from. And so back in 2004, it exceeded that number. Board said, well, you know, we need to talk about how we plan for jail expansion and renovation. So in 2005, they actually contracted for a jail study to evaluate what did they need in the future and some master planning for that. In 2006, that study was presented to the board and there was shown at that time a need for 581 beds that would be as of 2025. I mean, we're in 2025 now. There were some options presented, one for a 730-bed facility, $95 million, and then a 580-bed facility for $73 million. In 2006, later that year, actually very, just not even a month away, the board then approved a capital improvement program that had three phases of a plan to ultimately consider building a jail. First phase was design plans, then the second phase would be actual construction drawings and bidding, third phase would be construction administration. The board set aside funds specifically for Phase One. That was a rough, a little over 1.5 million. They did not set aside funds for Phase Two or Phase Three. We did actually spend 1.4 million, a little over that, for the design. And that was then, again, evaluated later in 2007. And unfortunately, about that time is when we started hitting the financial crisis and things started to slow down. And the board really put a hold on any future discussions because of the fact that, you know, things had really slowed down in that 2007, 2008 time frame. 2009 comes around and now the jail population again is exceeding the rated capacity over 240. They did evaluate using a facility that used to be an old state prison in Monroe. That was determined that significant cost, you could generate about 80 additional inmates, but the board did not move forward with that particular idea because I guess they felt that was not, it was not suitable for what we needed. In 2010, the board actually decided that they should update the study. Obviously, it started in 2005, so a number of years had gone by. They did a contract for that. Late 2010, the study came back and it showed a bed need of a little over 500, 500 inmates. No board action was taken at that time. Again, later in 2010, the board did put aside some funds for a design contract for, ultimately, a jail construction. They directed that that be essentially 448 total beds with a total of 224 in the beginning. There was no discussion of a 911 center. Now, I do want to point out that when there was a discussion about jail, it actually included a Sheriff's Administration office with that. So it wouldn't be just a jail, it would be the jail as well as a sheriff's administration office altogether. Those were all discussions all along. 2011, the board considered a public-private partnership that never went anywhere. I'm not saying you can't find people who are willing to privately help you fund a jail, but it's never actually materialized, so nothing happened for that. And then later on in 2011, the board, with a presentation from the design team, looked at a possible five-phase plan. And then you can see that it actually goes up to almost 1,800, a little over 1,800 beds if you went the full five phases, as well as that plan would be. Again, there was no funding set aside for that. It was not determined that it would be constructed. And then you see a big gap between 2011 and 2019. And part of that is that during that timeframe, there was a lot of discussion on, you know, how do we move forward? There were several bond referendums that took place. I'll show that in just a minute, to kind of show you how that broke down. And ultimately, there was a decision to separate the sheriff's office, the administrative portion of it, and the jail, and then go out to a general obligation bond referendum for the sheriff's office and a 911 center. The jail was not included in that general obligation bond voting referendum. It was just the office and the 911 center. There were a few other bonds that were on there, and I'll show those in a minute, but they were separated. I want to make that clear. In 2019, we also did a structural analysis of the sheriff's office portion of the facility, not the jail, but the actual sheriff's office portion. It was determined that there was some structural issues there. And ultimately, no work was done to correct that, but they did find there was some settlement. There was poor soil compaction. The engineer estimated the cost, but we never moved forward with any real work to be done on that issue. In 2020, again, we started talking about a master plan for the sheriff's office. What do we do? Obviously, there are some needs for a jail facility. That one was actually proposed at that time for a two-phase plan. One, ultimately, 600 beds would be the ultimate build-out. Phase One would be 376. And then Phase Two would add 224 to bring it up to a total of 600. You can see those cost estimates, a little over $90 million for the Phase One and almost $35 million for Phase Two. They updated that in 2022, those costs. Those costs went up to $93 million and then $37 million, or a little over $37 million. And then the discussion continued on until 2024, when we brought to the board some potential options for you to consider. And that's where you see, and I think the chair has brought this up on a number of occasions, the 400, 600, 500, 600, and 600, 600 options with estimated cost for that. There was some funding set aside in 2024 to help with advanced planning for that, that little over, almost $2.4 million. And then as of today, we have updated those jail funding and estimates to show you that if you did a 400, 800-bed, roughly $123 million, and a 600, 800-bed, that would be $150 million. Actually, I believe that's 400, 600, not 400, 800, but anyway. That's the timeline for the actual jail discussion. I told you there was some information about bonds, just want to talk about that for just a minute. There are a number of bonds been done over the last few years, since 2016. There was the Southwest Regional Library, as well as the South Piedmont Community College Facility. Both were approved at that timeframe. Then in 2016, you also had a school bond, a number of schools on that particular bond, as well as a bus garage, that passed as well. Also, in 2018, there was a four-each pavilion that did not pass. That is now known as the Simpson Event Center. That was a roughly, almost $9.8 million facility. It did not ultimately get built at $9.8 million. The total cost of that was about $2.8 million, but it was scaled down and built with cash funds. So the voters voted to not approve the project. It got scaled back as far as what it was, and cash was used to actually pay to build that facility. Then you had also, as I mentioned, the 911 center and the Union County Sheriff's Office admin portion was on a bond referendum in that same time, which did pass. Fast forward to 2022, you had a Union County Public Schools Bond and the South Piedmont Bond, both passed. And then lastly, in 2024, another Union County Public Schools Bond, which also passed. That's the history of the bonds portion of what we've done over the last few years. We have tried to update some of those numbers, just to give you an idea. These are estimates now. These are not bid prices. The years are just based on construction data that we have. If the board were to consider a 400-bed inmate facility with a 600-bed core, in 2026, that would be a little over, roughly $110 million. 2028, $114. 2030, $120. If you had a 50-bed inmate facility with a 600-bed core, again, $125,900, almost $126, $130, $137, and ultimately, a 60-bed inmate facility with a 60-bed core, and you can see those prices. Understand that it would be the staff's recommendation that if the board were to consider doing anything, we actually have the facility designed so that the core could be expanded, so not just have a 600-bed core, but it could be expanded to a larger core in the future, so then you could add additional inmate beds at some point in time in the future. We think that that's a better use of our funds and of the property. There is a request that the board consider, at least advancing the study that is remaining on the jail. There's a second part of it. And that really is to evaluate operational modeling and the staffing cost. This is not asking the board to make a decision that you're going to build it or how you fund building that. That will have to come, and that will have to come relatively quickly because in building the manager's budget, I will need to know in the next couple of months, do you want to build it? If you do want to build it, how do you want to fund it? And ultimately, how is that built into the budget? But that discussion does not have to happen tonight. This is really about the board giving us some direction on completing Phase Two of the jail study. I am recommending that you consider a 500-bed inmate facility with a 600-bed core, ultimately to be expanded at some point in time. That expansion is really up in the air. Is that 800? Is that 1,000? That doesn't have to be decided, but I think you at least need to give us some bookends, some parameters, if you want to move forward, so that the consultant can then finish the study. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have on this item.
Yes, I'm bored. Do you have any questions from the presentation? Yes, Mr. Sides.
Brian, when we say expand it, expandable, and I know it's, until you get to the design, you're not going to know for sure, but what would be your best estimate? How far a facility of, say, 600 beds, 600 core, right now, how far could you expand it? Could you double it in size, in theory? Is that a little bit too much to expect as far as expansion goes?
That's a good question, and I don't have a definitive answer. It would be my guess, honestly, that at a minimum, we would want to be able to expand it to, up to 800. I think 1,000 is probably a good number, but I'd say at a minimum, we want to be able to design it to go up to an 800. That's just my opinion. We don't have any data at this point in time. That would, off the cuff, that's what I'd say.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but in whatever manner it's decided, either limited obligation bonds or general obligation bonds before the voters, that is a 20-year payoff, correct?
That would be correct, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Hales.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brian, just a real quick question. If you could go back to the slide there with the bonds. So, the November 6, 2018 bond, where we've got the 911 center and then the sheriff's office administrative building.
Yes, sir.
Did I hear you correctly that at one point in time, that the jail was considered as a part of a greater package for both the 911 center and the administrative building?
Yeah, so originally, when they were looking at this, I think back in 2005, it was anticipated it would be a combined facility, sheriff's office, administrative portion, jail, which is what it is now. You look at what we currently have, we have administrative office, and then you have basically a walkway that leads to the jail portion of that. So I think the goal was to have both originally.
So, you know, obviously, I mean, no member of this board has been on the board, or was on the board in 2018. And for the record, I think that your timeline is great because, I mean, it goes to show you just how much work has gone into this by a number of different boards, not only this board, but others as well. But my question is, and maybe you know the answer, maybe you don't, but I'm going to pose a question anyway. Why was the jail facility left off of this plan? Was there, I mean, was there a specific reason as to why we deviated from that plan there to include the jail facility? Because, you know, just from the outside looking in, not being on that board at that time, I would think that the inclusion of a jail facility, along with the 911 center and then the administrative building, would have been more cost-effective in the long run?
I wish I had an answer for you. I don't. I don't know the mindset of the board or the staff at that time. Sheriff may have an answer to that.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I was around back then. The thinking was, when that plan come out, was to take the jail as it's set and make it the face, build it in front of the building that's there now, and make the face right there. Entrance to the jail, entrance to the office on Preston Road. Then you, if you're looking at the old jail, if you turn to the left, phases of it going right up that hill. What happened is, as you can see, nothing happened. The jail portion of it and the office started falling in. So they couldn't use that old portion as a jail anymore. I mean, we don't need to be using it, but that floor in the office building dropped about six to eight inches. That's where you saw the ARP organization come in. And their only answer was to put very expensive hydraulic pylons, I think ever four feet, and I don't want to be sure, but it's four feet, I think, all the way around that facility. Real expensive, but that was their only answer. They had to go 18 feet to hit solid ground. That's what the jail office was built on. So then the thinking switched to build an office and get us out of there before somebody got hurt. So that's what happened. Anymore?
Actually, I've got one other question. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. So in regards to the existing jail that we've got currently, and this is also a question of staff too, you know, one of the things we talked about in our retreat was whether or not there was anything at all, even on a small scale, that was going to be salvageable out of that building. Have we, do we have any information? I know that, you know, we're looking at scope of a new jail, but just to follow up on that conversation, do we have any sort of info on that at this point?
We have not been able to evaluate that. I will tell you that I think it is possible for us to use a portion of that. Now, I'm going to caution that by telling you that I don't think that it is something that should be used regularly and all the time. I think that if we were able to use a small portion of it, it might be treated like an annex, where you got a situation, you need to do something with a handful of inmates for a short period of time, that might be acceptable. Now, we haven't evaluated that. We obviously want to look at that, but off the top of my head, I would say that would probably be the best use of that facility for a very short temporary time with a small number of inmates. That's just my opinion. I don't have any data to go with that right now.
Just to give you a little more information on the old office portion of it, we now use it for training and some of the jail staff offices in there, but the bathroom's falling in, so it's not going to be able to keep going. We've got training facility in there, we've got CrossFit, we've got a place, we have some, a little ward's place back there, and a lot of, we're trying to get our best use out of that old building that we can, but it's going to fall in.
Thank you, Sheriff.
All righty.
Oh, Commissioner Volcom.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Sheriff Kathy, are the soils settling under the complete structure?
They are. And when he talks about the small portion of that jail, there's a big portion of that property behind the jail is in the flood zone, so you can't do anything with it. And that's not the county's fault, to be honest with you, because they moved the flood zone once the jail was built. So the back portion of it is close to being, not in the flood zone, but it's close to, it's the closest you can add to it. The building part is sinking. The plumbing, they laid the plumbing on the ground. It's deteriorating. Now we're having to go in and redo that plumbing, dig it out, which is an expensive project, and dig it out and then replace it. Overhead, the same way. So there's a portion of that jail that we could save for a while, but it's going to come with a expensive cost to change it over.
Thank you. More questions? Commissioner Sides.
Sheriff, this may have been asked before. Yeah, you stay up there too. You don't get it.
Okay.
If, now, we know that a timeline, if we decided today, which we're not, but if we decided today to build a new jail, whatever, we're looking at at least a year for design and three years for construction, is that right?
We would estimate in about four years, you could have a facility open.
Which means about five. Well, we'll give ourselves a little punch back. Okay. I'm going to ask you a what-if, Sheriff. If you had, if there was a new jail built today, how many beds could you fill up today?
Probably, there's 290-some down there today. We've got eight in Cabarrus County, I think eight in Raleigh. We've got inmates two in Stanley, so we'd be at 325 today if we had all our inmates gathered in. We've got people out on Ritz and all kinds of things. So we'd be at, if it was open today and we had all our inmates back in that we've got farmed out, we'd probably be around 320.
Now, does that take in, that does not take into account any special accommodations that have been made by the DA's office or the court system or what have you because of our restrictions, correct? Like maybe weekenders are kind of given special consideration, you know? So there have been some adjustments that have been made in the legal system to help with our problem.
They have. And that's with all that.
Okay, so that doesn't take that into account?
That's with all the accommodations, the two DAs that are up there that supposedly work in our jail.
Okay.
And they get them out as quick as they can.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Hales.
Sorry, this is a question for staff. So, Brian, let me ask you this. So, Brian, let me ask you this. You know, I, I see the recommended action here of 500 beds, 600 core. Listen, I'm in complete agreement that, you know, if we go down this road here, that the core has got to be expandable, and that's really the key, you know, this whole thing, because we're currently in a situation where, you know, we've got a jail that's 30 years old, but, I mean, we were looking at, at jail expansion 10 years into its, its existence. And we've kind of, we, we kind of like landlocked ourselves in there for a variety of reasons, whether it was a flow plane or just the overall design of the building. And so I, I think that, you know, as a board, and I, I know I don't speak for the board, but what I'll say is, I think that the general consensus, you know, should be or would be that, that we don't want to put ourselves back in that sit, that same situation and repeat the, the mistakes of the past. And so I'm, I'm in complete agreement with you that we have to have that expandable core in whatever it is that we do. But let me ask you this, as far as, you know, approving one option or the other, and, and obviously, this is for a financial assessment, so it's not a blanket approval.
Right.
And, and this would just essentially narrow down the scope so that, so that the consultant could bring back operational numbers and maybe revised capital costs.
And staffing as well.
Correct, yeah. So, so would it be possible then for us to request two options?
Certainly.
Of the consultant? Because, you know, as I look at the numbers, I kind of fall more towards like 425, 450-ish, sort of in between those two. And so I, personally, I would like to see maybe the consultant bring back, you know, a 400, 600?
Okay.
As well as the 500, 600. And I'm just asking if that's an option, as you know it, with what the consultant can provide us.
I, I believe they can, and, and we'll certainly, you know, have that conversation with them. Ultimately, what we're trying to do here is, is again, get operational modeling and staffing. So I, I don't think that's an exercise that, that is that difficult. Obviously, the, the staffing side of it is going to be scaled. You're not going to staff a 500-bed facility day one. You're going to staff it for your needs to begin with, and that may only be 400 to begin with, and then scale back up to 500. So it's really going to depend on, you know, how they're looking at the scaling side of it. So I think that's certainly doable, and we'll be happy to, to, to get that going as soon as possible if the board makes that decision tonight.
Commissioner Sodz.
I'm going to take a little contrarian view from that, and if we're looking at best-case scenario, according to Sheriff, we're looking at 350, 375 if we had a jail today, which we won't for four to five years, perhaps even longer, depending on other financing using general obligation. So I'm going to say, even if it opened in four, five years, we could be closer to pushing to 400. I think it's more appropriate because I would like to at least have the jail last at least 10 years before somebody has to start adding on to it. I think 600 beds, 600 cores more appropriate.
I, I think, again, we can sit here and speculate all day long on what it would be. I don't disagree that it ultimately could be needed for that. There's a price tag. The board's got to feel comfortable about the price tag. And, and so I, I'm here, I've given you a recommendation. That doesn't mean that it can't be adjusted. This is just a staff recommendation. I think we're looking at what already exists in the area. 500 beds seems to be similar to what's already existing by some of the other institutions and other counties that are out there, and so we thought that was a good starting place. That's where we came up with that number.
I thought comparison was 600 beds.
It, you know, as a whole, if you look at them and you average it, it's probably close to the 500 range. That's now, there's some, there's going to be more, but that was just our, you know, our thought on that.
Commissioner Hales.
Yeah, just, just a, a real quick comment. So, you know, obviously, we, we've looked at comparison information, and I understand what Commissioner Sodz is saying, but, you know, at the same time, a lot of the comparison information that we've looked at doesn't necessarily take into account the specifics of Union County. So again, you know, some of these other counties that we've compared ourselves to, well, they're going to have, you know, larger urban areas. They're going to have different, you know, trends at play that doesn't necessarily match up exactly with Union County. We're taking our best guess here. I certainly appreciated the comparison there with Johnston, because I think that that's a very comparable estimate, and just going off the top of my head here, memory, but I want to say that their, their bed count was somewhere in the neighborhood of like 460.
You're talking about current use?
Currently, yes, currently. And, and so I think that there's a lot of factors there at play that can influence, you know, ultimately what we see. I favor a more conservative approach, four, five, something like that, and that's why I suggested that we look at both. Because ultimately, you know, the last thing that we want to do, we don't want to build a building just to build a building, okay? We want to build a building that services our needs, certainly, and that can be expanded, but, you know, if, if we don't have the, if, if we don't have the inmates coming in, then we're essentially building a building or wasting taxpayer money. And so I would prefer to take a more conservative approach with the ability to expand the core, and I think that that's the key. You know, we can get hung up on bed count, but I think the absolute most important aspect of this is the expandable core and the design in which we do it, so.
Yep. Commissioner Hales.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve option two, the 500, 600 core to complete the consultant's work for the jail study, which includes the operational cost.
Can you tell me one more time what, what size you said?
The 500, 600.
500, 600. Okay. Any comments or questions to the motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can, can I make a friendly amendment to that?
Yes, sir.
In that we also approve or request the same information for a 400, 600 scope.
Absolutely.
So we, we include both of those.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You accept that friendly amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or comments to the amended motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. I will now recognize the county manager for comments.
I, I did want to just say thank you to all the staff and, you know, congratulate Union County Water on their, their award, their safety award. They do a really great job at that, and, and also, Mike Farrar is, is a, is a key to making sure that, that we do get those awards and that we are safe here. So I want to say thank you, and other than that, have a good night.
Thank you very much. I am going to start with Commissioner comments on Mr. Balkum.
Thank you. No, no real comment tonight, just encourage everyone to be careful going home.
Okay. Commissioner Hales.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd first like to recognize Representative ARP and Willis for bringing forward House Bill 170, which removes Union County from the downsizing bill discussed earlier and approved earlier this year. I'd also like to thank Judge Aaron Hux for the additional information in regards to the judges, and I'm appealing to our state reps to find, find additional funding to increase our judges, one, possibly two, hopefully, to alleviate additional issues at the judge at, excuse me, at the courthouse, and to alleviate issues at our jail. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I also want to thank our state representatives, ARP and Willis. I had the opportunity to speak to him this weekend, to thank him for doing that local bill for us to address Bill 382 for down zoning to remove Union County from that. I think they, they heard from us and the community, and they responded to help Union County with this, and told him personally how much this board appreciates the work that he's doing in Raleigh. And, and we also told him that if the next time he's in Union County, we might make him an honorary firefighter. So I don't know if many of you know, but Ann and Dean are, were traveling one day, and they, they saw a home that was on fire, and they turned around, and he went back and saved someone from a burning house. And so that's our Dean ARP. And so we told him how proud we are of him, and we, we just might have to recognize him one night and, and bring him up here. Representative Dean ARP and I also discussed the needs from our District Court Judge, Aaron Hux, who was here with us at the last meeting, and he was very receptive of that information and, and wanted more information, and we discussed the state formula and that it's not a perfect formula, but again, as Dean ARP always does, he said he wanted to help us any way he could and to send him the information, and I have done that, and he's going to review it very carefully. And I will turn it over to Commissioner Bronham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll too give, you know, public acknowledgement of our local delegation and the work that they've done in regards to local bills that would reverse some of the actions of SB 382. You know, those of you that watch our meetings and attend our meetings have, have all heard us talk about SB 382, and so we have to give credit where credit's due, and so we certainly appreciate their efforts there. I also agree Judge Hux has supplied us with great information. There was an item on our consent agenda that we, you know, add consideration of a, of a district court judge to our legislative agenda. I appreciate Chairman Merrill's efforts there and, and talking with our, our local delegation about that issue. I also want to thank all the speakers that we had tonight. So, you know, obviously, we've had a lot of public comment tonight, and we've had lots of public hearings, and there's been different opinions, you know, on some of the things we've talked about. I, I felt like overall, everybody was respectful, and, you know, although there was different opinions, I felt like each opinion held, held value. And so I want to thank the public. Your engagement matters, and I appreciate all the effort that was made tonight to voice your concerns. Thank you.
And the emails. We've gotten plenty of emails to consider.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Sodz.
No comments.
Okay, everyone, that concludes our meeting for March 3. I want to thank you all for being here, and I will make a motion for us to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone.[1771.76]